Over the third, 2022 order. We have a quarter. Item three on our agendas is item for review and discussion. Item three A is Department of Leisure Services. Three A one is future plans for disc golf. I'll be looking at updates to the Rosier Park disc golf course and look at consideration of Cherokee Pines location. Mr. Swan?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Council. Presentation, we plan to do some upgrades to our existing disc golf course at Rosier Park. Our targets are pretty much the holes that they throw at discs that are overdue for upgrades. So we plan to, I'm not sure where it was, we plan to do some renovations to them. As you see, this is our existing golf course. We have eighteen holes, similar to a regular golf course. We have eighteen holes that we'd like to replace, two hundred dollars a piece. We would like to update the tee sirens, so just like in golf, we have pars per hole and course map in the rule siren, we're looking to update those things. So our operating budget should handle these costs. We have donation done, and I wanted to introduce Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez is with our.
House and County Disc Golf Association.
Yeah.
Thanks for having me.
All right. He gives a quote on these items, and they're a great advocate of the sport, of course. And so we're looking to do updates. I wanted to update y'all on renovations that are coming. Just some data I wanted to share with the Professional Disc Golf Association. We noticed that six percent of all the players are falling through the age range of twenty and forty years old, which, as we've noticed, that is our, you know, that falls within our median age. We're here in Perry, and we're noticing that our disc golf course is heavily used. I was out here today, I think we had about thirty people taking part in our disc golf course today. We average about a hundred people on average per week. So it's a growing trend. Pro Disc Golf Association states that it's the fastest growing sport currently, and this graph right here shows that disc golf tournaments are increasing across the nation. So with that being said, my recommendation is to look into hosting some disc golf tournaments, particularly with Cherokee Pines. I think, you know, we were looking for a new purpose, how to repurpose that park, give it a, give us something feasible to do there. I think it would be a good transition to turn into a disc golf course. We currently have a tier C course at Rosier Park, and in host tournaments, on average, they have about one hundred, twenty-two to one hundred and thirty-four people that attend these tournaments. And looking at Cherokee Pines, because it's already set up as a disc golf, as a golf course, we would be able to transition into a level B, a B-tier level golf course, which, as you see, attracts about a hundred and thirty-four to two hundred participants per tournament. And that has an effect on, impacted on our local economy. Of course, these participants are gonna stop in, they're gonna gas up, they're gonna stop by restaurants or hotels, and, you know, have heads in beds. I think that's one of our goals here in Perry. But heads in beds, so economic impact. Oh, don't go too far. And I brought Mr. Perez here if y'all have any technical questions for our disc golf. You know, Councilwoman Peterson shared a concern about parking possibly.
If we, you said you have a, would you continue to have the course at Rosier Park?
Yes, sir.
How much of the park's space would be taken up by disc golf in all Cherokee?
To remind us that, and I had a map of it. It would, you wanna answer that? Mr. Will, you got a map for us?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
So we have, look at this here, Councilman, Councilman Peterson, here you go. So this is kinda just a general layout of what it would look like, and this is a very conceptual layout. If you see here, again, this is where the existing clubhouse is.
Right, okay, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
So the whole thing?
The right-hand side, yeah, the right-hand side, basically, this whole section here, which obviously can be manipulated in any way, any form or fashion that we would like to do.
Right-hand side being in the backyards of.
Directly across the street, all the way down, the street that.
Just like a regular golf course.
So the layout that you see there, I went through and marked it myself, measured it all out, and I did see that the existing golf course does get really close to the backyards of some residents. So there are a few fairways, and I kinda just, I left a whole fairway distance between us and the potential golf layout.
How would that much space be taken up and pack the trails that were intended for the passive park?
Significant. My concern, the public press, is that I personally, in discussing it with the people who live there, told them that the only thing that we knew that we would support right now was Harry's Cross Country, and that's, they have one event and one or two events a year relatively light usage, and that's the understanding that the citizens have out there. I would not wanna move forward with this type of thing without going back to them and making them aware of the thoughts that are moving forward. Because we were very, very specific when we thought that, and, you know, no number of concerns.
It absolutely is everything you said it was, a growing popular sport. We're just talking about the location.
I understand, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
You know, if we do make statements, if we do decide to move forward, if the neighbors over there, and that one section that we already bought, they don't like it, if it's gonna be a growing sport, it gonna help the economy, we might have to look for another location.
I think so, too. I think we can find.
I think we can, too, you know, but I tell you, I think you said, I call them young blood, they got them.
We are, yes. Thank you for noticing.
Y'all wanna spend some money, we wanna take some of it.
Anyone else have any comments relative to the Rosier Park recommendation, which I think is great, it's time, you know?
I agree that it's a fast-growing sports, but I think the problem for the need to find, look at some other locations with equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to get that money while they're ready to spend it.
But in the meantime, we will be doing the upgrades out of Rosier though.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmore, any comments?
Well, number one, the only reason that track group is out there is because that was one of the conditions on purchasing the property. When that council went and said, okay, that was a requirement for when we purchased it. The second thing, like you've talked about, is that the discussion with all the neighbors, and this is one thing we keep going around with a lot of other folks who wanna come in there, that is not classified as a destination park, like Rosier is, and that's why the disc golf and the courts and all that, those go into destination parks. This is a larger green space, but it is a passive park. And we have, in the past, either administratively or directly with your actions, have said no to other groups that wanna come out there and hold offense there. The other thing I think that's more important is we can possibly keep it, you know, as one of the items, but I think it'd be much more important for council to come back and determine, determine what are the primary functions that are gonna go in there right now. I mean, there hasn't, for example, following up on Ms. Peterson, there hasn't been a final determination from you all about a walking trail. I mean, it's assumed, but, you know, it hasn't actually been designed and laid out. The parking lot that's gonna be going over there is a relatively small parking lot, a little larger, I think, than the one over at Rotary Centennial Park, but not much, you know? You know, just like if, may not be quite as bad, but if somebody came in and said, well, you oughta put a dog park in there. I'm not sure about that because of the volume of folks that you can wind up having. So, you know, I think similar to what y'all are talking about, my recommendation is we say thank you, we put that on that list, and, you know, maybe something will be done with it, maybe it won't.
Yeah. Can you define the difference between the parks you mentioned up?
Yes. We have three basic types of parks. The first one is a destination park, like Creekwood, Heritage, Rosier, Calhoun. You know, you go to those parks, and there are some type of major functions that go on, either mutually or exclusively. For example, council determined a number of years ago, I know Mr. Hunt remembers this, that tennis courts are gonna be at Calhoun. Once time to make improvements or increase for tennis courts, then it's at Calhoun. Not a tennis court added at every single park. You have ball fields, you know, at some of the parks. You have, you know, walking trails, you have, a lot of times, destination parks will have lighting, you know, which greatly affects the neighbors and all that type of stuff when you have activities. You have a lot more parking demands, you know, because of the activity that you have. The second group of parks that we have are passive parks. For example, Woodlawn, you know, over off of Duncan, there are several other parks around, a number of parks in, you know, Johnny Noble Dixon, for example, some of these other type of parks. And those pocket parks are primarily designed to serve the neighbors. You know, and they vary in size, but they're primarily neighborhood type of parks. And then the last type we have would be, you know, like green space parks, if you will, where the property is owned by the city, it's maintained, it's natural state, so we don't go mow it, we don't cut down trees, we don't get rid of squirrels. I mean, it's all just natural green type of space that should be there. And a number of, not picking on disc golf, obviously, but a number of folks, I know the two members, place members don't remember this, but I think the rest of you remember the long laundry list. I think, in fact, I think Robert just sent it back out to you all of stuff that people wanted to have, you know, over at that park, you know, and some of them, we just said, right off, said, no, we're not going to do that. Because the primary concerns, you know, I think that council always has to take into account, is going to be the traffic, the noise, and the lighting, and how that affects, you know, the adjacent neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any other questions or comments relative to the disc golf? Any questions, Mr. Swan?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Wish you a lot of luck in your sport.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Did we, didn't we think about his request for the, any upgrades for the disc golf?
Yeah, he didn't have any objections.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't mean to minimize it, but it's five thousand dollars, so he said it's time, so I'm assuming it's time, and we go.
I figured I didn't get any objection from any of you, and it fits within his normal budget, so, I mean, that's just maintenance, I'm living that, so, thank you for the question, though. Item three B is from our finance department. Mr. Worthington, do you wanna talk about the same purchasing policy?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Council. Thank you for letting me talk about some very exciting things compared to disc golf. So like I said, tonight we'll be discussing some potential revisions to the purchasing policy. We'll do it, I'll get this to work. There we go. So let's start with, what is the purpose of a procurement policy? As you can see here, I've listed a number of reasons, but really what they all boil down to is, the big picture is that every purchase the city makes, we're extending taxpayer dollars, and we need to have good controls over that to make sure that we're spending those effectively and efficiently on what we need to be spending along. Mayor Council's really involvement in this process, and you'll see, this'll make a little bit more sense on the next slide, though, is council really needs to decide at what threshold do different people need to get involved to decide how much scrutiny is needed on those purchases. Our current policy, I think, while decent, I think we can improve it, and really this last bullet point here, where it says provide for increased efficiency, economy, and flexibility. Our current policy has a couple of bottlenecks in it, I think that don't provide very well for efficiency and flexibility. I'm hoping that we can alleviate, alleviate those with y'all's, with y'all's action tonight. Here's an overview of our current policy. As you can see, there's really three of those thresholds I was talking about. If it's under five hundred dollars, it's a non-competitive purchasing process. Whoever the user department is can just buy the piece of, either the piece of equipment to supply whatever it is. Anything over five hundred dollars and up to five thousand dollars, the department is supposed to get multiple quotes and then get a PO from the purchasing department before they make that purchase. And then, and this is one of the bottlenecks I'd like to point out here, is anything over five thousand dollars currently is supposed to be formally bid, and it is, with the exception of, thanks to recent action by you guys, it's actually a twelve thousand dollar threshold for repairs and maintenance, and that was to initially alleviate some of these bottlenecks. But still, even with that twelve thousand dollar threshold for repairs and maintenance, you guys still approve a purchase if it's over five thousand dollars. What I would like to propose as a draft and get y'all's input on is updating these thresholds. So if you're in agreeance, or we can open this up to y'all's ideas as well, I would like to add a thousand dollars to that non-competitive threshold, so it would be up to fifteen hundred dollars. The departments can purchase, purchase any supplies, goods, services that they see fit. I would like to note that, I would like to add a clause into the policy that states that while the departments can buy them non-competitively, they're supposed to obtain goods and services most advantageous, most advantageous to the city with price and other factors considered. So basically, that puts them on the departments to say, while we don't require competition, it's still your responsibility to make sure we're getting a good deal and spending the taxpayer dollars wisely. The next limit that I would propose would be fifteen hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. Within those limits, I've actually, I would like to require three written quotes. Right now, we don't specify a number within our policy, we just say multiple quotes. I would like a minimum of three, to get the, and then to make the purchase, you need to provide those three quotes to purchasing, and we'll cut you a PO to make that, to make that purchase. So basically, it's the user department's responsibility, you get those quotes and add a little bit of competition to the process, it's purchasing's responsibility to verify those three quotes. The next, and this is a new level within the policy that I'm proposing, would be ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand. I'm calling this a request for informal quotes. So this is just another level of competition that we would add. Basically, the user department would provide the purchasing department with some sort of specs for whatever they wanna buy. We would advertise it, but we don't require any sort of sealed bids. We would advertise it, and then from there, they can call the people they know that provide, say if it's a lawnmower. They would, they know who the people are to provide those, they would call them, they can provide us quotes, no need to seal them, anything like that, just get them to us, buy whatever date we specify. And then, the next level would be the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. Anything above that, we still need to formally bid. That would go off for sealed quotes, whether that be an RFP or a Q or just a sealed bid. And really, the responsibility at that point starts getting into the purchasing department, and anything over ten thousand dollars would still come to this body to be approved. Any questions at that point? I know that was a good bit of information. These numbers I came up with, if you're asking me why at ten thousand dollars, I, you know, why at that point would I start introducing some formal competition? In my mind, it's because if you look at it, ten thousand dollars, somewhere in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range seems to be the limit of, or the threshold where we really start getting into buying new capital versus just replacing the old capital. I think you might remember, we had to bring, several months ago, the replacement of an air conditioner to you guys in the middle of summer, and it was six thousand dollars. So that kind of, that was the bottleneck there was, and we can't replace the air conditioner in July until the next council meeting. But at, above ten thousand dollars, we start getting into things like a twelve thousand dollar lawnmower that you guys just approved. So you guys would still, those type purchases would still come to you guys for approval. Along with this, I would like to ask that, and part of the purchasing policy, is the threshold on when a PO gets approved and who can approve it. On my left here, our current is anything under a five hundred dollars does not need a purchase order. We currently have some PBs, which are kinda like a request for a check, or it's just, or they can purchase it on their P card. Anything between five hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars, the purchasing agent is allowed to sign off on that, that's currently the finance director. Anything between thirty-five hundred and five thousand dollars is the city manager signs off on, and then anything above five thousand dollars, the city manager can sign off on, but city council ultimately approves that as part of the fit approval process. My proposed threshold is kind of in line with the limits that I, what I wrote on the last slide. As you can see, I'm saying that up to fifteen hundred dollars, there's no PO needed, the department just makes the purchase with their, the city's interest in mind. Between fifteen hundred and five thousand dollars, they do need a PO, but the purchasing agent can sign off on that, that being the finance director for now. The next level would be between five thousand and ten thousand dollars, the city manager would sign off on that purchase order. And then anything above ten thousand dollars, city manager would still approve, but it would have already come to you guys to be approved as they did. By doing this, I ran some numbers, if this had been the policy in FY19, we cut seven hundred and eighteen purchase orders, three hundred and ten of those were under fifteen hundred dollars, so we would have cut that workload by forty-three percent on the purchasing department. One of the reasons for looking at this is, as the city's grown, continuing to make more purchases, it's putting a lot of pressure on staff, and if we don't make some of these changes, eventually, we would probably need a new purchasing person or some sort of staffing to do the purchasing. I think if we make these changes, we can kick that can down the road a little bit, we can become a little bit more efficient, and we won't have to hire anybody for now. There's a few other issues to consider. Our current policy states that we can purchase off of state of Georgia contract. That's a little limiting, well, number one, I wanted to see what you guys thought on that, was, do you still want to make that available? And if so, when can we use it and how broadly? Several policies that I've read actually make it much broader than that. One would be that you can, quote unquote, piggyback on other local governments. So, for example, if Warner Robbins put out a bid to buy police vehicles, and they were buying the same type of police vehicles that we wanted, we could contact the vendor and go, hey, you guys sold those to Warner Robbins, who's already competitively bid this. If you'll sell those to the city of Harry at the same price, there's no need for us to competitively bid it, because we saw your process was open, it was transparent, and we were gonna do the exact same thing anyway. So you've already basically done the bid for us. There's also purchasing consortiums that are out there. One of, one of the most known ones for this, for governments is called Sourcewell, is formerly NJPA, which is the National Joint Powers Alliance. There are groups that will, they actually put things out to bid, and it's just on their website, it's very transparent, they kind of bid things out beforehand, and then you can just go purchase off of those contracts. So you can see that this has already been bid, everything's already in place, and if it meets our standard, we can just buy off of that. I don't know how I feel about that. It would be much easier, but it takes a lot of the control away from the local authorities. And then also, what about if there's a local vendor involved? Well, yes, we can buy police vehicles off of state contract, do we wanna do that, or do we wanna give the local vendor a chance? Those are all questions I have, I would have for this body, as we're rewriting the policy. My recommendation would be that we would rewrite, we would rewrite that clause, so it's a little bit broader, so that we can piggyback off local, other local governments within the state of Georgia. The next issue we'd kinda consider would be updating the capitalization threshold, that's currently at five thousand dollars, so anything that costs five thousand dollars or above and has a useful life of more than one year does not get expensed, it goes onto the balance sheet and gets depreciated. If we're gonna, if we're gonna up the limit for bidding to ten thousand dollars, I think it would make sense that we would up the capitalization to ten thousand dollars as well. That way, anything that, anything that goes before this body, if it's a piece of capital that had a useful life of more than one year, would be capitalized instead of expense, anything less than that. It just kinda makes the two policies match. And also, state law covers public works, construction, which is a construction project over a hundred thousand dollars, we don't have control over that, state law kicks in and we have to follow their rules. I guess questions, sorry to put you guys to sleep.
Questions, comments?
Okay, now, you, will you explain that to me again? Will we be losing the local vendor's preference?
No, no, local vendor's preference would stay exactly how it's written. If we bid something out and it's a local vendor who's within seven percent, we would give them the chance to match it before we award it.
So what if we, what if we piggyback, there would not be a local vendor?
That, that's kind of the consideration that I'm asking here, you know? When do we want to use the state contract or the piggyback option? We could, we wouldn't have to put it in policy, but we could make it practice, that if there is a local vendor, we're gonna bid no matter what, that's off the books. And I don't, I don't necessarily think that would have to be in the policy, we could just make it practice. And if that's what you guys desire, give the local vendor the chance. I've, I've heard of other.
I wouldn't wanna lose that.
Definitely not, I think it's a great tool for our local vendors. I've also heard of, or I've seen policies from local governments that allow for, if they find something on state contract that they like, say a police vehicle, you could go to the local vendor, instead of bidding it out, you say, hey, state contract says the, the police vehicle's thirty-five thousand dollars. If you match that, we don't have to bid it, we can give it directly to you, because it's already been bid at the state level. I mean, what that does is, it frees up staff time, it allows for more efficiency, instead of putting a bid out for a month, we spend a day finding what we need on the state contract, we take it to our local vendor, and if they're willing to do it, we just took a month-long process and turned it into a day. There, there's just several options there, and it's, it's kinda up to council to make those decisions. While we have recommendations, we kinda would like your input.
Thoughts? Well, one thing, I'm listening to you, you there. Each department have an option to purchase what they need at a point.
Yes, sir.
So, in all, who gonna keep this within that control reign? Is that each department? You're not gonna put it on this king or this mayor? How are we gonna maintain the status of everything that we're doing, and that, do we have a certain set of money coming out the general phone, or where does the money come from? And how are we gonna maintain it? The idea is good, what you're saying, but how are we going to be able to, are you following me?
Yes, sir. That would fall on the purchasing agent, I think, the policy, not, the policy currently states that it's the purchasing agent's responsibility to make sure that the city's following this policy. So basically, how that would work is, let's, for example, if I, if a department turns in a requisition for a PO.
Okay.
That's, that's above the five thousand dollar mark, I know that they need to have three quotes with it. And if they don't, I send it back and say, no, go get three quotes. Or if it's above twenty-five thousand, I call, I call, you know, I send it back and say, no, we gotta bid this out, guys, you can't make that purchase. They're not allowed to make that purchase without a PO, and we're not gonna issue a PO unless we know that they have followed the process.
And also, also following up on that, Mr. King, the first controlling deal is gonna be the budget that you all approve. If there isn't money in there to proceed with that, then it's not going to go. The second aspect, or the controlling aspect, is we are ready or have started going online with a purchasing system. So if you go in with that purchasing system, whatever the policy is, if you don't have money in that line item, it's gonna kick out there. So you're not gonna be able to proceed until you get an okay from whoever the appropriate person would be. You know, so for example, if fire says they need some more hose, and their line item doesn't have it, and they go with, you know, underneath this criteria, then it's automatically gonna kick back, and it won't issue that purchase order unless there's an override So it's not wild times on the range.
So, just a question relative to Mr. Swan.
So, uh, just a question relative to Mr. Swan's discussion earlier. As an example, your proposed draft says if somebody spends between 15 and 10,000, they would have to have three written quotes to supply that.
Yes, sir, or make an attempt at getting three quotes.
Because I know, because Mr. Perez has quoted on that and I was just getting clarification that that's not a single vendor.
Not that I'm aware of, no. I, I think there's probably other vendors that can supply-
But you, you would require that-
Yes, sir.
And with three quotes for anything over 1,500 dollars.
Yes, sir. And currently, we're supposed to do that with anything over 500 dollars. Unless there's circumstances to override the policy. You know, if, if it's a piece of equipment, um, say that if, if it's a piece of equipment, it's over 1,500 dollars, but it's to go on to other piece of equipment that we already own. Obviously, we're not gonna buy a Kubota piece of equipment because it's cheaper to go on to your tractor. Um, so those kind of situations will arise.
If I might, following up, there's another aspect that we have, which is called sole source. And the department can come in and say, either it's a result of having gone through bidding or, uh, like Mitchell was talking about matching, you know, pieces of equipment or whatever. But the department has to come in and request it. Uh, for example, police has a series of sole source providers that provide their emergency lights that fit their particular vehicle. You see, I mean, very unique things. As long as there, as far as we know, the first thing they have to do is they have to come to me and get a written okay back and provide the justification of why it should be a sole source provider. Second thing as far as the check deal is that there are, as far as we know, there are no other local vendors that possibly may, uh, provide this service. Uh, you know, so for example, if we go and, and get a piece of equipment like, uh, you know, Mitchell talked about a Kubota, you know, well, we do have a local Kubota dealer here, so that would have to be taken into consideration. Or that dealer may be designated as a sole source because only Kubota equipment's gonna fit on, and from a, from a supplier. Uh, so in that particular case, you would have both, okay? For example, um, if we had, we don't have too much the bigger equipment, but for example, if we had a piece of equipment that's manufactured and serviced by Caterpillar, well, Calipers divided the whole country into certain service people and they're the only ones you go to. You can't even, at my mercy, you can't even go to another Caterpillar dealer like up in metro Atlanta if they're not in our service area here. So when you have those type of things, then that vendor is designated as a sole source vendor. But there's a regular process that has to be done as well. Now, the control's relative to that, the budget, that still applies, even if it's a sole source.
And you're comfortable with the 1,500 dollars of no, basically with no accountability, like it's just-
The accountability is on the department, uh, is, is how I would state that. Now, I'm not gonna say it's audited on a regular fashion, but if anything doesn't make sense, you know, we, we still see every line item and everything that's spent with the city. If we see something that doesn't make any sense, we'll still ask the department, tell them what's going on here. Why are we buying batteries from X, Y, Z when we know they're cheaper over the ABC? Um, things like that.
Yeah, yep. The other thing with that, though, like Mitchell talked about, is that we are constantly going back and watching to see where are we going. Uh, you may remember, we recently came back and you approved an overall HVAC maintenance deal for one vendor. You know, because before, there were a whole series of different vendors that were going out, all of which may fall below this threshold for each individual service call. But if you go back and take a look at how many of those service call, you see what I mean? It starts to kick up. Uh, so anytime we see any type of pattern, then we go back and say, uh, are these a set of unique circumstances but seem to be repetitious? Or is it ongoing task that constantly have to be done? And if that's the case, then we need to go out on a, in, probably in this case, a formal, you know, bidding process, which comes back to you all, uh, that says, yes, you under- So then, so then everybody's covered, you see what I mean? So if it's, if it's Sullivan that's handling our HVAC and you get a complaint from, or a concern from another one of the local vendors, you can go back and say, well, this went out for such and such a date. You had an opportunity to respond. You did, you were not the low vendor or you weren't within the local, uh, you know, the, um, local preference. You see what I mean? But you, but you've got that, that support, you know, to go back. The primary, even maybe, the primary driving agents on this is that number one, the levels that we have here have not changed except for the maintenance deal in 20-plus years. Okay? And they don't work with the prices that you have and what we have to deal with today. The second thing, like, like Mitchell talked about, is, uh, if we have, or we have these regulations and so therefore, as we continue to grow, if you keep them at the same limits, you're gonna have to provide more manpower to keep up with it and take care of it. Because all this stuff is checked by the auditors, for example, and they may have a note in there that you're not doing what you're supposed to do or whatever the case may be. Third thing we're interested in doing is providing an opportunity for every local vendor to effectively compete. That is not the same as guaranteeing that local vendors are going to get the project. But if it's relatively small, you see what I mean? Then, and that's where you get back to definition of relatively small, but the suggestion here is 1,500. Then that would allow us to check to see with local vendors. If there's more than one, then they'll check to see, you know, with the others. And, and those are the major things that we're interested in. My suggestion would be, unless there, unless there's something else that immediately strikes you, is that within that basic outline, and not every one of your questions, I'm sure, has, has been answered. You may not even know what the questions are right now, come to think of it. But what I recommend, unless you have some objections, is that, uh, staff will provide a proposed policy outline that generally follows this type of, you know, what's been outlined here. And then you can go through, take a look at that, all the other little aspects that are in there and then you can determine what it is that you would like to do or not like to do. Unless council believe they want us to keep everything the same. And if that's the case, then we'll just keep it that way.
Well, I think he's made a very good case for why it needs to be changed. It streamlines, uh, and makes the work more efficient. And, and certainly about prices today being so greatly different from prices in the past, so I'm good with it.
Well, look at it, if somebody's gonna use your P card, they're gonna do it at 500 dollars, just like they are at the bank. So we gotta have the checks and balances in place that if something like that happens, then we know immediately we shut it down and, and they're very good at doing that, so.
Which I would like to add one thing with the, um, with the addition of this P O module, P O, uh, that, uh, Mr. Gilmore talked about earlier, we are able to monitor it much quicker. You know, we can say, we're not flipping through paper, it's all within the system. Uh, we can make sure that we're paying the right people for exactly what we ordered. Uh, we even have the ability on quantity type issues where we can say that this person agreed to sell us widgets for 5 dollars apiece. If they send us 33 widgets and we typed in that we got 33 of them, it calculates what we're paying them. That's just another thing in there that, harder to abuse, how about that? The controls are getting there with technology and we are planning on doing that.
Additional questions? So everyone's okay with Mr. Worthington coming back with a policy statement outlining this in the form of a policy? So you can read it.
Yes, yes.
Item 3C1, Community Development Department. We have a discussion about the extension of the Oletta Trail. Mr. McMorley?
Mayor, Council, thank you. Okay, um, I've been tasked with reviewing the original proposed trail extension. Um, this is an example of what Brian Engineering has prepared. Uh, you'll see on the right where we have the highlighted in green, um, in this area right here. That is through a swampy area portion of Big Indian Creek. Uh, Big Indian Creek was the original destination for the, the walking trail, just to provide us with, uh, the nature and the enjoyment of walking along these sewer easements that we've been working with over the years. Uh, this come in very expensive, uh, and so the city manager asked me to come back with more options that we maybe could save some money. This was, uh, this entire path was 5,200 feet. That's 3,000 feet of boardwalk and that estimated cost is 1.2 million dollars. Um, that cost, uh, I got these numbers, this 350 per linear foot of boardwalk came from a recent project comparison deal on Sandy Rock Creek at Warner Robbins, um, where their boardwalk came in at 350 dollars a foot. That is not the same type of bridge that you see on our whitetail trail, but it is a, a eight-foot wide, uh, bridge that you could say could handle a U T V or something like that, or some maintenance equipment to go back and work on this, uh, on the boardwalk. Um, that's also through an extreme swampy area where challenges of building the boardwalk is, is also in that cost. Uh, the 85 dollars a foot, you see there for the 10-foot wide path is a number that was pulled from our most recent phase of Whitetail Trail, which, uh, goes behind Creekwood Park. Uh, that number averaged out, uh, to 85 dollars a foot for that project. The 55 dollars per foot of sidewalk there on, as I said, five-foot wide, was an average that I put together between our Tucker Road sidewalk and our Wingfield Way, most recent sidewalk project. It comes up to about 55 dollars a foot going down. Uh, sewer easements are relatively easier path to put a sidewalk or on the, uh, road routes. Four-foot wide sidewalks, the price isn't really much difference. We may save a few dollars if it was four-foot wide. Okay, okay, on this, uh, slide here, you'll see this is our sewer, sewer easements. I put this in here because originally, our task was to follow sewer easements with, um, walking trails for multiple reasons. One is we have to maintain sewer easements. We want to be able to get to our sewer manholes and lines to do repairs. It makes good sense to have your trail where, where they're easy to get to. So, uh, this is just, uh, a rendition, of course, this is Interfor Lumber Company here. And then you can see this main, uh, sewer line that comes along. The creek is on the south side of this 21-inch sewer easement. And then the, uh, and it has a crossing right here in the lower portion of it, uh, which is coming from the fairgrounds. On the slide next to it, this is the flood map. And I put this on here just to show the, the candy cane driving here is, is your floodway. So this is really, um, on here to show the challenges of crossing certain areas. This is the area we were wanting to cross that we had to do more walking. You can see the floodways are extremely wide. So that's just a, it, it costs a lot of money to work inside that floodway. So some options I've indicated is crossing the floodway in these narrow, narrow places where you maybe, in this area, you can see it's real narrow. Maybe ever cross right here or you take it out to an existing bridge. So that's just there for your reference. Okay, um, on these slides, um, this picture, of course, is the creek. Right back there across the creek, there is our Oletta Trail. Um, it's hard to see during this picture. This is our sewer easement that goes back to, uh, the well right behind Interfor. It's pretty clean. It, uh, extends past the Evergreen Cemetery area, as you can see it right there on the edge. So this is what you can see if you're walking down this area. On this map, this is kind of a master map I've put together where there are a lot of different options. I color-coded them different just so you can see the, the thought process behind the options. On the sewer map, you saw, say, this green line right here. This was our sewer easement that crosses. If we wanted to try to maintain that portion for sewer easement, this area right here where this, uh, the end of existing trail, that is where our trail currently ends. To extend it further south would be kept going through a swampier area. Um, so the options would be you take it back out to, um, MLK or you try to cross the creek and get to a better, more feasible area to construct the trail. So, um, I can click back to that slide as needed if we need to. So I think I have, uh, I don't know, six or so options on here. So real quickly, I'll try to go through them. Uh, the first easiest option you think is let's just pull the trail out to the, uh, the road and construct a sidewalk. The sidewalk would be multi-useful as we need sidewalks around town. And then it would also connect one portion of the city to the other. We could, um, bring our trail out. This particular connection right here would be, uh, bringing it out to the weekly entrance, I guess, where it comes out close to MLK. Um, this picture next door is bringing it from the, uh, the next slide over is bringing it from the end of the trail, which you would have to install another 775 foot of, uh, trail to get out to the, uh, MLK. So then once you're on the MLK, there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of Martin Luther King. There is not one on the side that the creek's on. So, um, there are options to cross the street, um, or put in a new sidewalk on that side that, that doesn't have a, um, a sidewalk. As you can see, there are a lot of homes and lots, uh, from the tax assessors map there that's, that could benefit from a sidewalk too. So this, this particular trail would go all the way down to Big Indian Creek Drive, um, and then cross Big Indian Creek Drive over to Ball Street, uh, Extension. Up Ball Street Extension, it could cross at Tucker, but there's no sidewalk currently at Tucker. The nearest sidewalk is at Duncan. So, um, to extend it all the way and make full connectivity from sidewalk to sidewalk, it would need to go to Duncan, which is, uh, 10,000 feet of sidewalk. At the five-foot width or the 5 to 5 dollars comes up to, um, 550,000 dollars. Uh, down at the bottom, I just put some notes down here at the different, um, the different bits, uh, or the different areas we would put sidewalk from there. On option B, um, I used the sewer easement that we discussed and pulled the trail from the, pulled the, uh, trail from the existing end. So the existing end of the trail, if you ever walked to the end of, it's got a little cul-de-sac turnaround for your pedestrian. Uh, it would turn out to MLK, go down to Big Indian Creek Drive, cut across to the sewer easement, which is on, uh, the golf property. Uh, we would need to try to identify an easement or property there with, with the golf owner. Um, there would be a portion of bridge, probably 450 feet by best estimates. And then, uh, that bridge, I used the board, the boardwalk estimate, estimate of 350 dollars. And then it could extend up and connect into the sewer easement there on Interfor. Of course, Interfor has, uh, some challenges as they've advised us that they would like to have a fence, um, that separates public access from their property. Uh, so that is a discussion that we've had in Interfor and I'm sure, uh, a small portion of the property like this wouldn't be a big deal, but full length of the property may be another topic of discussion. Um, we do have easements, but they are sewer easements. Uh, a walking trail would require a public access easement to allow public to travel through that area. This project estimates up, you can see, um, 600,000 dollars. Half the price of the boardwalk. Option C would be to utilize the full sewer easement on the north side of the creek, which is relatively most of Interfor's property. The first property there is the cemetery. Uh, the second two are Interfor's. Uh, this one has a different owner, which used to be the Bluebird, from what I understand. Uh, maybe difficult to work with this property owner. And then the last two properties are Interfor's. But that would get us all the way back to Ball Street on our sewer easement to maintain the end and then back up to Duncan for 540,000 dollars. Um, I did recommend putting in a bridge in this particular one, which would connect Centennial Park over to behind the existing, um, uh, old water plant or Water Plant One, which will be phasing out, uh, and become a portion of that park in the near future, we hope. This is an example of that. Okay, so this is, this is the water main that is crossing, uh, Big Indian Creek right behind the old water plant. And this would be the area which is a relatively short distance across the creek. It's high ground. Of course, it's a Centennial Park, it'd be easy to connect to the, uh, path there and then the easements behind the water plant. And then also add aesthetic feature of a, of a walking bridge or something there to kind of hide the, the pipe structure, uh, being exposed to the stream. Okay, on this particular option, this would be- Okay, on this particular option, this would be picking up the end of our trail, which is currently weekly at the end of it. Crossing relatively in this area toward the end of the trail to get over to the sewer easement and then, then extending around. It's be trying to make the most of the trail that we have and limit the distance of, uh, walking trail that we need to install. So that would be fifty-six hundred total feet. You'd have half a million dollars. Uh, but it would, it would have a feature of a bridge that's pretty expensive. Option E, uh, would be somewhat of a loop, uh, which doesn't really get you to a new, uh, portion of sidewalk or existing sidewalk. But it does create a, a walking trail, uh, that could be phased in in the future. I would say that short bridge there at the water plant, follow the easement down to a portion where we could cross, um, either on this property or this property, or this little section that is the cities that goes to the old well, uh, and tie back into the existing trail. Again, that would be, uh, much less in cost as it's a shorter distance and it really just takes you on a, a loop instead of connecting existing sidewalks. Um, kind of went through that pretty quick. That's, uh, that's all of them. Uh, any questions or comments?
What is the funding source on this project, which regards to the option?
That would depend on how fast you wanted to go. If you wanted to construct the whole thing pretty quick and the estimated cost is half a million dollars and we'd have to go to the public facilities authority, you know, to pay for that. If you decided to do it in segments, uh, then we may be able to get some, not much, but some recreation grant money. We remember we had a grant before, nowhere near this, we had some money from them. And then the rest of that portion could come from splosh.
That option D, was that just straight out and then straight back? I didn't see where it looked.
It doesn't loop in. I've got it back up here now. It would be picking up from the end of the current trail where we've stopped in construction, going to our next phase. Instead of continuing through the swampy area, you cross the creek and continue on the sewer easements, which is more manageable. Uh, it's easier to get the, uh, concrete trucks back there on the sewer easements to, to do a concrete path than it is down right next to the creek itself.
But option E?
Option D. Option D does create the loop. Uh, it creates the loop because you're picking up on the end of the existing trail, crossing the creek because you really can't go any further without having to expend an extreme amount of money through the swamp and then taking it back up to the old water plant where it would cross, you could cross back again.
But we could build off option E at a later time, sure, if we wanted to, depending on funding availability and so forth.
The photos I took, um, that you see in some of these were, this was from the east side. Um, so you would say this is on the opposite side of Centennial Park. Most people don't walk on that side. Behind the cemetery, the cemetery would be to your back in this picture. And then, um, in this picture here, this is down closer to the well, um, on the, that side of the, the Interfor side. But it may be difficult to get, uh, public access for some of that.
I would challenge you to think about what we've said in our strategic plan as to we want connectivity. So I think the question that we're asking tonight is what is your preference? We, this might tell you, if you think about Big Indian Creek, I don't remember when it was actually started, but it has been done in segments. And I think that we need to take a broader look of where we want our connectivity to go. And not just say, well, we can afford this little piece right here, but I would rather us have a long-term plan that says, okay, we can do two hundred thousand dollars worth and that's what we did with the white, white trail, Whitetail Trail. Is that, that was a dirt path when we started. And then we've got funding from the Rotary plus the grant, and so we just concrete it. Then we had more splosh money, so we took it all the way up to Creekwood Park. And that's a long-term vision of, you know, what we can do. And I, you know, I personally, if we're gonna have a nature trail, I really like option C. It's only forty thousand dollars more than the five hundred thousand. But you put in a bridge up and going across, which is gonna be very scenic at the water plant, come down through the nature, but also connect yourself back into Ball Street. And I just, you know, that, if it's feasible, now, I don't know what Interfor will or will not do as relative as letting us change that to a walking path. I don't know, I don't know that. But if I had personal wishes, that's what I would like for it to look like. That's just my personal opinion.
I, I like the aesthetic appeal of the bridge, the walk.
Well, I just don't want to go build another sidewalk. I mean, that, that's not the purpose of us putting the trails down. Understand the functionality of it, but I, I'm not sure it meets the overall objective of what we're trying to accomplish. That's one person's opinion.
I've got another person's opinion.
Okay.
Since we've spent so much money on parks, literally parks, not talking about walking trails now. But we need to sort of put that on the back burner for a short time.
We can. Yeah, there's no, there's nothing to say tomorrow. Well, what I'd asked for was conceptually, where does this council want to go? You know, we talked about it. We started putting the bridge in and we hit them up. And so we couldn't go forward. And I was just, the question then becomes, where do you go? If you, we, we approved a trail that was gonna go down to Big Indian Creek Drive and go across, that type thing. That's not feasible today. And so now we have to, we're back at a decision-making point. And I don't, I mean, you know, I'm not advocating that we go punch to cash register and start moving with this thing forward. I agree with you, Mr. Hunt. I think we need to be very conservative, but I would like for us to come to a consensus as to what you would like to see in your long-range plan.
Could we find out from Interfor what they would require of us?
Well, that would be part of, you know, the, you know, looking at what would be required. I, you know, that's part of the design phase and doing the investigation to turn, might, might not be possible.
Right, yeah.
I mean, the, and we might have to look at alternatives, but, uh, I think we start with a plan, then we pursue what you can or cannot do, and then our staff continually comes back to us and says, not gonna work. So where you want to go now, so.
Just following up on that. If the general consensus of council is not to run the long way, which we cut nowhere to Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King down to Big Indian Creek, Big Indian Creek, real long way. Um, and I think that's probably your consensus, but I can't go for sure. But assuming that's the case, then we will contact Interfor and find out what its position is. To give you an example, when it was Tollison Lumber, we could not do this option C at all. You know, Tollison Lumber and Mr. Hunt, Phyllis and Willie may remember that. You know, Tollison Lumber would not allow any crossing over Big Indian Creek onto their property where they had their operational facility. I don't know whether that's still their position or not. You know, that's two owners. Uh, you know, Interfor's seems to have a little more of a public interest, but I don't know if they have that much of a public interest. Um, or, uh, they may say that yes, under certain circumstances, in certain areas you can come in and ask to be affected. You see what I mean? And, and we would get that information and let you know, and then following back on Mr. Walker's point, that would determine what we'd come back and say relative to the planning type of aspect.
I, I personally feel that we have outlined connectivity as being a priority in the strategic plan. So I think it's worth investigating to see what the requirements would be. But to the mayor's point earlier and to Mr. Hunt's point, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend the money, you know, immediately tomorrow.
It might be, and if we're approved in the next splosh, it might be the, in the next splosh.
Right.
I don't know that. I mean, I'm just saying that if you don't have, you know, something that you're working towards, the staff can't go find out if it's a reality or not. They might come back and Interfor says, you're not coming across the, you know, Big Indian Creek, period. Well, okay, punt. You know, we have to go back and say, well, that's not gonna work. But I would like to pursue that with them to see if that's an alternative. Because, I mean, we bought a good bit of property down there thinking that if we bought it, that, you know, we'd do the connectivity on the other side. Eventually, we ran into an issue, so we're back looking at it now, just like, you know, we did in the past.
And I, I, I would guess I would like to see us look at investigating option C if that's the general consensus. At least give us a framework moving forward to say this is where we want to go and find out whether or not we can do it.
I think, I feel the same way. You know, I mean, I think that, uh, as we sat there, listening to Chad explain each option to us. They're fun lying to that. I know we're gonna go from there and we go, just give it opportunity and accept, see what Interfor say. Let's proceed, you know, all right, we're not like that. They're not pushing our budget right now. The hallway we leave there. You gotta have a plan and keep moving. Let's not stop. Let's keep moving. And by keep moving, that means the money might come up in the spot somewhere. But if not, we got it out there so we'll know where we at and so what we can accomplish.
I think it would be critical to know from Interfor. If they're gonna say no, then we'd need to invest any more effort in anything until we know that.
But it does give the staff the opportunity to go ask that question with your, your guidance.
Difficult for me.
Okay.
Everybody okay? We're just doing the explore, like, exploration of the feasibility of this option C?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McMurray?
Well.
Mr. Gilmore?
Go ahead.
My understanding is we're taking a look at options that involve Interfor proper right now.
Right. That's right.
Right.
If you don't, we gotta come back to a table.
Right.
And then I'll come back to sleep. I know you told me I have to figure out what my priorities are.
This is just, this is just a difference between the city manager, okay?
We're just about.
Well, mine is, I forget which one it is, but we use the existing trail. We cross over Big Indian Creek at that water line and then loop it back around to Ball Street. I mean, I don't particularly see a value of that, because I walk that trail every single weekend. And I don't see the value of having the trail on both sides of the creek and putting that kind of money in compared to new trail going someplace and, and keeping your looping connectivity.
My point is it's only forty thousand dollar difference. If it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would say, yeah. But that's a expensive trail on the, on that west, um, I guess it would be the eastern side, uh, so.
But there is an option there for three hundred thousand also.
Yeah, but there again, you can do whatever you want to do for three hundred. You can make this one three hundred. You can say, I'm only gonna do stage one until we identify, you know, we might say we're gonna do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's it until. But all I'm saying is find out where you can go with it long-term and then make the decision. And if you start the project, it's, like I said, it's no different than we started Big Indian, you know, the Rotary Centennial Park. It's, it was a vision. And it's taken us fifteen years to get there.
So going back to, to the minute, you have a different option, option A right there.
Well, personally, yes, but I mean, ultimately, you know, once, at least my understanding, once we get the response from Tollison, that's gonna indicate what some of the options are. All the options are still there. Then we go back and start saying, okay, fine, you know, is there any particular preference? You may remember, um, Mayor Faircloth, which, which is very true, was talking about the importance about getting the land.
Right.
You know, getting it okay, even before you start any of the construction, making sure that you can, you can go in there. You know, for example, if Interfor says, yes, you can come on, but you're gonna have to pay us X amount of dollars per foot per whatever. Uh, you know, that has a big impact on what we wind up doing.
But just to clarify, I did hear you say that you endorsed A. Is that the one you want to go with? The five hundred and fifty thousand dollar option?
A is, A is the one down along Martin Luther King, all the way in the big.
Yes, I understand that was the one. D was the one you were referring to.
Yes.
To come back in here is what I understood what you said.
No, no, not, not down there, not yet. I think it's, because the, the other interest in this thing type of thing too is, at least from my perspec, well, either one of these things. But if you, if, one of the things that's really good about trails, particular urban trails, is to see different things from a different perspective. And that's what creates, you know, interest and all that type of stuff. So you come down this side and you cross over and you can see or hear some of the sound. So we get an okay from Tollison. I mean, you're safe. You're not on there, but you can see some of their activities. And then you loop back around on the high land, which is what we're interested in doing to reduce the cost. And then you can come up along on Ball. And ultimately, you have this connection going up on Ball back up onto, uh, where the sidewalk on Ball is. So then you wind up having this loop that'll take you around, you cross over the creek two times. So I agree with Robert, that's one of the most attractive things we have, is to be able to cross over the creek and that type of stuff.
No question about it.
Um, and then it'll bring you back up into downtown.
Now, would that come out, uh, at Interfor below it or above it?
Below.
Well below it, maybe though. It would be below the bridge. You can come across the bridge.
Yeah, the, uh, underneath, I think these two, there basically the bridge would be in the same place.
If we did that, then would that, could that possibly extend the downtown district to there? Like you'd have, you'd have more connectivity.
You could. The manager would never recommend you take an industrial function like Interfor and put it into the downtown district.
No, that's right.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correct, we're going to explore what Interfor's interest is in allowing us to move forward there. And if they do, then we'll make a selection of what trail would be feasible for us to use.
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Much better. However, whatever you like, man.
What other questions might you have this evening relative to the trails for Mr. McMurray? Thank you, Mr. McMurray. We're sure appreciate it. Thanks for all the work you did on that. Your problem, that would've been kind of real easy.
Uh, excuse you, mayor. Sorry. Point of clarification on that. I think it's assumed, but I also want to make, make sure, um, that any sort of exploration or whatever moving forward uh, may or may not involve the Lemonowskis who own the old Blue Jay Meatpacking facility. So it would be Interfor and the Lemonowskis, I think that's how you pronounce it. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I even give it to you?
You can always hope.
You can dodge. Three D is Office of the City Manager. Three D one is a presentation of our communication plan. Mrs. Clark?
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, to be effective, effective in communication, we must be strategic. Um, in that communication to keep our diverse community informed and educated while enhancing the city's visibility and transparency. So the document that you have, um, on your computer as well as before you is a strategic document to align communication efforts with the goals and key messages of the city of Perry. So tonight, I'm just gonna briefly touch on a few of those. Uh, the details are in the. Um, so we're gonna start with our communication principles. So in two thousand and twenty, we want to focus on three key principles with communication. We're gonna be timely, uh, disseminating information quickly after direct confirmation from city officials. Openly determine what information is important to the public or what issues need to be communicated in an effective way and strategically where we create and distribute information that is easy to access and understand, which goes into your accessibility. Our communication strategy will consist of transparency, making sure that information is open to all of our audiences, responsive to the ever-changing communication landscapes, innovative where we research and implement new ways to communicate that is effective, structured where we establish clear goals and guidelines for the communication that we distribute, and accessibility ensuring that information is easy to find and understand. So first off, we're gonna talk about direct communication. And our strategy for that is to produce information in an accurate and timely manner to residents, businesses, and and visitors, incorporating a variety of communication sources. So some of the action steps would be to inform a city through the internet, social media, and traditional media platforms, which encompasses a variety, variety of communication sources, raise awareness of decisions made by mayor and council members, also through these channels, making sure the city's branding strategy is being followed strictly, so we have one voice and one image as a city, producing video and digital content to increase engagement, our monthly newsletter to our public subscribers, and knowing what communication channels are best suited for each audience. Our web service strategy is to utilize the city's multiple media platforms to disseminate information to our citizens, stakeholders, and visitors. So we do that through the city website, through producing video and digital media to enhance our viewer engagement and support effective communication, making sure your city source is running correctly and troubleshooting any issues, and updating the Your Perry Act with several, over a thousand subscribers as of right now. Our social media strategy is communicate through the city's social media accounts to inform the public of city news and events. We're gonna do this through social media accounts, producing multimedia content to keep it interesting, always make sure that we maintain our customer service, especially when there are complaints or issues or questions that are brought along with that, and then of course, cross promote information with our city partners through their social media Our media relations strategy is to respond to media inquiries in an accurate and timely manner while promoting the city of Perry's news and special events. We make sure that we have a wide variety of local and state media contacts to spread the news as far as we can. We are in the, we are partnering with the Spanish Facebook channel, Notavision, Georgia, to make sure that our Hispanic population is also being reached. We are constantly maintaining and enhancing our relationship with reporters, to make sure that we have a mutual respect in communication. Media interviews with various city personnel, we don't just want one face, we wanna make sure that the most accurate and the most proper person is responding to whatever the media is asking about. And also, we will train staff on media interviews and techniques to making sure that they put their best foot the work when communicating with media. And the last one I wanna touch on tonight is our community relations strategy, is to encourage active participation with citizens by providing information that is relative, relevant, excuse me, to community interests and community initiatives. We're about to kick off our town hall meetings, which will be person as well as virtual. Our Your Perry App is continuing to be one of the greatest resources we have for citizens reporting problems, and as well as direct communication with city officials. We continue to go to regional business meetings and partnerships to make sure we're all on the same page and communicating properly with them. We are hosting business tours and student tours of city operations, and of course, the Your City Program, which are, we are revising for this year to be even more effective than it was in the years past. So communication looks different to everyone, especially within generational groups, so we're continuing to look for innovative ways to meet, to communicate with each of our target audiences, so we can keep the community informed and educated about the great things happening in the city of Perry. So I'll entertain questions, if you have any for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Council members, questions or comments relative to the communication plan?
I think it looks great.
I got a big, 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 big.
Well, of course, this is a fluid document, so any feedback or changes that you would like, please contact me, and we'll be happy to sit down and discuss what you need to do there.
What questions do you have?
One thing I would like to say is that, you made a valid point there, before getting people trained and communicated, and you're talking about the Spanish group that we're reaching out to, and I think that's more important, like, any time we communicate with people, we wanna put our best foot forward, like you said, and be able to let people know that we're concerned about all, all of Perry, just not some Perry. We want, we want everybody to know that, that's what, and it's just like you said, the people who you send out to, to make contact, make sure that they'll, they understand, and they know how to communicate properly to the people they're gonna be talking to. I think that's a good point.
Just a question, if we, does, if Channel thirteen, let's say there's a controversial issue, let's say, heaven forbid, this doesn't happen, we have a police officer situation, do they, do they go straight through Tabitha, or would they go straight to the police department? If they wanted to talk to the police chief or whatever?
Historically, they will initially start with who they know and have some contact with, or who they think would be most germane and up to date on the topic. So, for example, I believe, is this correct, when we had the homicide, or was it Smith? No, not Smith.
Oldfield.
An Oldfield.
Yeah, there's one in Oldfield, but also by an apartment complex, the name escapes me right now.
Can you?
Anyway.
Can you?
Yeah, that's right. They will contact the police department, and Chief Lynn has his folks prepared quite well, particularly, for example, Captain Dyke's, you know, handling the investigation, or possibly Major Phelps, about giving the initial information to the media, or the chief, you know, depending what the circumstances are. If there are items that come up through council meetings, then usually it will be contacting the mayor or myself, you know, and find out. Sometimes they will contact, for example, me, asking about, oh, Cedric's open house, you know, for the different programs, and so then I will, assuming that the, like, for example, Cedric is available, then I will direct the media to Cedric to talk to, because just like Tabitha was talking about, we are strongly committed to not only put the best face forward, but the greatest variety of faces forward.
Well, I would, I guess, asking about maybe more of a, a negative situation in respect to everybody being on the same sheet of music and what's being said.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Because, like, like, with the school system, if M A Z contacted me, I would say, you gotta go through
Right.
The community best, and so I didn't know if that...
Oh, I, I, I agree with you. Yes, we've had those circumstances, and then it comes to the mayor or myself.
Because what we go for is, the mayor saying one thing, and if Dyke's or whoever has spoken to them...
Right, well, no, all our, all our department heads and everything are very good about that. If it, if it's, if, go back like on, on the shooting type of deal, okay? If it's an issue of fact, you know, particularly because the news has scanned it, they're out there, I mean, the cops are there, you know, then they're, they're going to give an initial statement, you know, there was. If the media tries to press more, then they will say, well, this is the information we have, you'll have to con, contact, or whatever, or go through Tabitha, or to myself, or the mayor. If it's, if it's some type of incident that one of our employees abused a child, and that'd be something where it, you know, we just refer everything to the mayor.
And so if we're contacted
Right.
For some controversy, and they want to stir up controversy, then I'm going to her.
Correct. Historically, it had, it would be, because we have, we have not had Tabitha that long.
Right.
Historically, when, when, I think it's on, just about anything, you know, when the media contacts the elected officials, they always say, contact the mayor.
Is that it?
They certainly be fine about directing them to Tabitha, but Tabitha will wind up doing the same type of thing as well, unless, unless it's a fairly general, you know, safe type of thing. But what we do, we do have, from experience and, and roles and everything, a, I think, relatively good screening process, not to hide anything, but make sure that the best information gets out. That's why sometimes you'll see, for example, going back with police, about Perry, police doesn't say a whole bunch about incidents other than what the facts are, because they don't want any jumping to assumptions or false information getting out until they know for sure what's going on. Sometimes that's frustrating, you know, for the media and the citizens, but I think it's a better way to go.
But you know, one day, that's, going back to what Dr. Chan, I know when they come to me and want information, and like, you made a good point, if I ain't got the facts or whatever, I'm not gonna try to answer my question. I either direct it to you
Right.
I direct it to the mayor, I direct it to the chief, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna sit there and have me or something, you know what I mean? And first thing you gonna say, uh, Council McKee said so and so and so, and here come you saying something different.
Right.
And I learned how, and I tell the doctor, I learned, 'cause I've been here long enough, I learned how to not to say anything. If I ain't got the information, I ain't got the facts, I'm not gonna open my mouth.
No doubt.
And they look at me, that's right, and that's what I tell them, and they'll play that, so they can get information.
We do, we do the exact same thing, you know, we just don't start talking
Right.
Cuff, if somebody calls and says, I wanna know about this, well, if I don't, if I'm not aware of the facts and that kind of stuff, we'll call Tabitha, and we'll call Lee, and we're gonna get the information together, and we'll tell them, hey, look, we'll give you this information at X time, give us an opportunity to understand what the issues are, we'd like to be factual in our reporting.
And we're also in the process, with the mayor's request, of producing kind of like a talking points template on some of the most frequently asked questions, and that will get distributed out as well, so we kind of all on the same page, all the best points of talking and things like that, so that will be coming your way as well, and that's just another tool that we can have to make sure that we're all saying the exact same thing with one message.
Will that be the fluid document that's updated?
Correct.
Soon, okay.
Everything I do is fluid, so you can just assign that.
And the other, the other thing we'll wind up doing is, if it is something that is of a particular interest of the elected official, and the elected official is familiar with it, then we'll direct media to that elected official. For example, Mr. King going to the
Housing, the gift convention?
Gift deal, and you have that money coming back and everything, well, he's very, very familiar with that program.
Right.
So the media may call and say, hey, I saw this, who should we speak to? And then we'll refer him to Mr. King, or, you know, Mr. Smith or whatever. Now, we always check with you first, you gotta make sure that you're comfortable, you wanna do that, but if you are, then, then we'll set it up for you.
And I'm also always available if you are having a media interview, if you would like for me to be there and, and kind of observe and make sure everything goes correctly, I'm always available.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I'm more than willing to allow any one of you to stand in front of the camera if I want to pass the, pass that one.
Do it.
Anything else about communication plan, plan, any recommendations or any suggestions, or would you like to look at it and talk with Mr. Clark?
Personally, I think she's on target, I mean, that's my personal opinion, she's on target, how she's presented to a, and these strategies as she moves forward, you know what I mean, I think that was, I thought that was me, she deal with every situation, you know, how do we react, I think, I give you thumbs up.
Thank you, sir.
It's a great plan, but I don't care what you do, somebody gonna say, I have no idea.
Absolutely.
So there's nothing more you can do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Very good plan.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3D2, or dear proposal job classification for the Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Smith?
Mayor? Mayor and council, following up on your January 21st meeting, where you approved a number of positions for the city, we have it before you tonight for your review, a proposed job classification description for the Public Works Superintendent. As this is a new position, we'd like to get these to you, so you have a chance to take a look at or review it, get any sort of comments, concerns, questions back to us, and of course, if you're okay with it, as is presented, we can get that posted as soon as possible. Basically, what we've done is put together a, a fairly broad job description for a department head level position that, of course, oversee public works, the various divisions down there, including solid waste, infrastructure, landscaping, and buildings, not buildings, you know, all the, all the same types of department head level responsibilities, preparing the budget, overseeing financial operations associated with the department, personnel decisions, all of those types of things this person will be responsible for. You have it before you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
As I understand, this is not a department head?
No, it is.
It is?
Yes.
The Board of Superintendent, okay.
That's just the terminology.
Yeah, I think some of that too, correct me if I'm wrong, this is Mr. Gilmore? A typical department head level position requires a college degree, as this is a superintendent level position, we are not requiring a college degree, and I think that was a distinction that we did discuss at some point.
It's preferred, but we're not requiring.
Correct, correct.
The reason we're making that change is, you may remember the issues we went through before when we went out for Director of Public Works. And we feel that this will provide a, a better opportunity, I think probably a number of candidates will have degrees, but I think it'd be beneficial to, as a stated, that's a preference, but not a minimum requirement. Because last time, for the new council mayor's, when we, last time it had the degree, we wound up with a bunch of ex-engineers, remember that?
Yes.
And they were, they were generally weak on our major public work functions that we need them to do. You know, for example, they knew an awful lot about road construction maybe, but we don't construct roads, very, very little experience about maintenance, remember that? You know, those type of things, so that's why we made that change.
Yeah.
We'll use the same process that we did.
Yes.
I'm all right, thank you, so good.
Council member, your thoughts? Think about it, or are you ready to move forward this evening?
After, after looking at all those
Sorry.
All those engineers that applied for the job, I think this is good.
We will have this on your agenda tomorrow, because you actually have to approve this level of the job.
When will the job be filled, when's the deadline, or?
Following, following up on Phyllis' point, our usual process for this is that you approve this job classification tomorrow, it will, very short, almost immediately after that, it goes out and it's posted, the normal timeframe is probably about forty-five to sixty days, and then it comes back to, following the same process, the council selection committee to initially review all the candidate's applications that have come in, and then that committee makes a recommendation to the rest of council about who to interview. There's always at least three, as I remember, if, sometimes there's five, I mean, whoever seems to be the closest, and then council meets and interviews each one of those candidates, and then council determines who they think would be most appropriate.
We have a third question that we have asked.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Everybody ready to move forward and vote on this tomorrow night? Mr. Gilmore, you have the consensus, Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Please put it on the agenda for tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item 3D3 is considering D doc proposal to install 4G routers on city traffic signals. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack, you have a copy of an email that went to Chad from, a representative from the Georgia DOT, indicating that getting your okay to install 4G routers on five traffic signals, all of which are downtown. And as you can see there, his team will install the 4G routers at no cost to the city, having a 4G router at those locations would enable our district staff to better respond and assist at those locations. So, if, the reason this is coming to you is to see if you agree or concur to allow DOT to do that. Now, one of your questions may be, well, Mr. Manager, what do you think? Now, one of your questions may be, well, Mr. Manager, what do you think? Mr. Manager thinks, no, I don't see any point on this. My concern with this is, is that DOT is coming in and making this offer so that they can control these signals for the traffic flow on Commerce Street. Because that's what we went through, you may remember, when DOT still controlled Main Street, they coming up to Ball, I think most council member that, and the problems we had, you know, and, and their, which I understand, their major focus is through traffic on Commerce Street. They don't care about downtown, they don't care really about us crossing over, you know, any of that type of stuff. And so my recommendation to you all is that we thank them very much, but decline, unless they can come in with some other type of reason. Because you also may remember about district staff, he says here, to better respond, we've had a very poor track record when they had it underneath their direct control about responding.
I was skeptical anyway, so I'm sold. No, it is.
I'm glad you answered my question, I had a question, but you answered your conversation. What was the purpose of it? You told me what the purpose they wanted to do it. I say, no, we don't need them coming.
Mr. Park?
I'll go along with the manager.
Mr. Gilmore, if you would, just send him a nice note, tell him we appreciate their offer, but we will respectfully decline.
Well, let me ask you this, what, what's, what's the driving force behind this contacting us? Are, are they getting phone calls from our residents? Just obviously a little?
They're, I think they're probably just looking at it statewide. I imagine where they look at bottlenecks or anything like that and how they-
How would they look at it?
They look at traffic counts and stuff like that in our town. They also look at the speed that the traffic moves up and down Forty-One, and if there's any bottlenecks there. Because they're downtown a lot, if you're looking for their traffic.
One of their real big focuses is the route coming on Main Street into downtown, turning on Washington, crossing Carroll, and then either turning onto Commerce Street or continuing on Washington Street out to Sam Nun. If you're stood on that corner and everything, there's an awful lot of traffic on there, particularly in the commute time. And like I said, historically, and I don't see where there's any change, their major focus is to have Commerce Street run as well as it can.
But to answer your question, we have received no comments from local citizens relative delays or anything like that. Most of the ones they wanna control are over their own Main Street, but really it's not a problem. I mean, we maintain them and take care of them on a regular basis. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item 3D4, consider request relative to city utilities easement. Ms. Newby?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, you have on board pack a copy of an amendment to a right-of-way easement that has been prepared on behalf of the city by Debbie Sullivan with Utility Service Group. Utility Service Group is who we contract with that handles licensing telecommunications equipment on any of our water tanks. The city obtained a right-of-way easement from First Christian Church of Perry, Georgia, Inc. in nineteen eighty-seven, as well as two additional property owners. That right-of-way easement was to allow us access back to our water tower, and it was just for the purpose of utilities, maintaining a water, a water system, sewer and gas. The document that Miss Sullivan has prepared is to, is asking the church to amend that right-of-way easement to also allow, for the, well, I had a conversation with her subsequently, that she said this document would have to be revised, that what they're really asking for is just the ability of these telecommunication companies to drive across the easement to access our water tower whenever they place any type of telecommunication, like equipment or antennas on top of the water tank. But as drafted in front of you, it's also asking for the ability to install conduit wires, fiber and pipes along the easement. So that's one that she said would be removed, to be revised, with the church's prior written approval being required at any such time that any of these telecommunication providers wanted to actually try and install anything underground. But currently, the telecommunication companies would only be interested in the ability to drive across the easement to access their equipment on the water tank. Also, I did confirm with her, the right-of-way easement only impacts the property of First Christian Church. Previously in nineteen eighty-seven, the right-of-way easement that we received was also granted by two other property, adjacent property owners, but they're not involved in this part, which is why it's only being presented to First Christian Church. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this.
Question, questions or comments?
So I understand right? Or about the telephone occasionally, they gonna be able to round talk the box, right?
Yes, sir, that's what Miss Sullivan said, they would be revising this document so that it would be limited to just ingress or egress access to drive across the easement. And the language would be incorporated to require the church's prior written approval before anyone had the ability to actually install anything underground across the easement.
We currently have, as I understand, we currently have an easement there.
We do.
Because we have services on that tower that have access to that. I think they were adding a new vendor, as I understood it, once you told me that, that they wanted to add some, I don't know what verbiage they're changing now, but, but that was their initial, that Verizon wanted to go on that tower and they had to have access as well, so. It sounds like they're trying to clean that up as well, so. Are you ready to move forward based upon Ms. Newby cleaning up the thing to reflect the discussion we had here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Would move forward with it?
Yes, sir, I'll get this on.
This is just to transit the easement.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Nothing's going under the grain.
Oh, wow.
Not without prior written approval from the church, as I heard.
That's my understanding, yes. I am leery, and I think it's gonna be coming back again, just based on the conversation we had with Hargreaves, and where they're going with this stuff and everything. Because my, my understanding, when, they may have modified it, but when this conversation originally came up in October, talking to ESG, they were talking about physical infrastructure going in. And they wanted to check and make sure there wasn't gonna be any conflict with our utilities that were there. And if that's changed, okay. Now, as, as it generally, as a matter of practice, we do allow people, if they have to come in and service, they check with ESG, and we allow them to go in and do whatever it's they have to do.
We're not gonna allow them to be, like you said, I saw your hesitation there, so they can just go in, so we're gonna protect that. That's, that's my question.
Well, you know, based on what Ms. Newby said, as far as I can tell, I think, I think that's fine. You know, if they're just gonna traverse the easement to go service their own stuff. But I think this is the opening round on something else. Okay? And, you know, I would, not right now, but I think I wouldn't be surprised if a little later on, you're going to have some of these telecommunication people coming in saying they want to do more with their infrastructure on our, on our properties. Now, if we totally own the access, you know, for example, coming into the water tank we have at Calhoun Park, that's all our own property, you see what I mean? We own all that type of stuff, so you all can say yes or no, whatever the case may be. But when we have these easements that are accessed, then we're involving other parties. And historically, you know, these other parties have been willing and gracious, just like the original easement status here, for the city to use it for city type of functions, like water and sewer and gas. You know, but when you move into something else, you know, then they may want to have some other questions or issues.
Would purchasing that piece of land ever be something the city would want to do?
It runs through the middle of their church line. I can't speak for them, but it, it comes right through the middle of their church.
But just to clarify, this easement is drafted on behalf of the city, or the city is requesting the church to modify our easement. It's still the church's property, so it's up to them to grant this. We're just discussing what it is that we're actually asking the amendment for and, and the reason behind it.
In broad general terms, Ms. Peterson?
Yes. We should own it. Yeah, kinda going back on the trail, that could be another issue over on Interpol. You know, that a lot of these old easements, or even some of the newer easements, I mean, they're specific for only particular uses, and if we're gonna come back and change it, then you have to get an okay from the owner.
And if the church were to say no, the ramifications of that would be?
Then that would most likely leave the telecommunication providers dealing directly with the church to try to change their own easement.
Questions?
Will the church be looking for illegal help from you? Like, I mean, what's, what do you predict their stance would be?
I don't know, if mayor, he had any right to communication with them.
Not only communications, as Ben would sue us, and their request for us to consider it, so.
Now, I have spoken to representative from the church. Church has no issues with the city type of stuff. I think on a crossing over for Verizon, I'm assuming that probably will be okay if that's all it is. But if there's something else, then church does have serious questions, so.
Ms. Newby, I assume you'll bring it back with you if you have a chance to talk to the folks?
Yes, sir, I'll make the revisions with the Sullivan, like we discussed, and then she's actually the one who's been in contact with the church and will present it to them, and then I'll let you know once we get back from them.
Thank you. 3D5, consider adjusting reference department on purchasing card policy, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Mayor and council, in your board pack is a copy of the first page, not all the rest of it, which is why you may have an incomplete sentence down at the end, relative to that. We would just like to have your concurrence, unless you do not want to do it. When this policy was originally adopted, it ran through the Department of Administration. We have now established the Department of Finance, or Finance Department, so would just like to have, unless you have some objections about shifting it over, as you see, it makes reference to the Director of Administration, and just change that to the Finance Director. Because Finance is in charge of keeping up with the P car, you may remember on some of the discussion that we had earlier. This does not change any policy or anything like that, just adjusting according to your latest organization.
Questions? Makes sense, it would be in the Finance, and so it's gonna be controlled through the Finance Director, so. Everybody okay? So you can forward, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you.
Item four is council member items. Mr. King? Ms. Peterson? Doc Albrecht?
Yes, sir. Tell me that again, I was trying to get-
Do you have any comments? Comments? Any comments tonight?
Yes, I got one or two. It's in the city limits, right?
No, it's not.
It's not? Forget it then.
I'm sorry. I haven't yet. I have made a request to the county that their code enforcement officer go out there and clean up both those lots, that old trailer and the PNM grill.
It's an eyesore that needs cleaning up, and we could suggest to the county if they do it or have it done. It would be greatly appreciated you coming right into Perry, and that's the first eyesore you see.
Yeah, I had that conversation with the chairman within the last two weeks, and he promised me that they would take care of it.
Good. I have asked two times previously that the trailer be moved on Main Street in the old Walker House, I don't know who owns it now, but that trailer's been sitting there since they moved in, and it's in the front yard. We don't allow anybody else to do that, at least we don't, we hope we don't.
You're talking about the Hilda Walker's house on Main Street, the red trailer that's sitting there?
Yes, and since they moved in. And I've asked twice that that be, previously, I asked for it to be removed, not removed, just where it's supposed to, the back of the building.
We will follow up with the code enforcement officer on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And that has gone through code enforcement. We do not have anything in our ordinance that prohibits that trailer. It's not, it's not a recreational vehicle, it's not a boat, and it's not a commercial vehicle that, that we can tell. We'll be happy to prepare an amendment, but at this point, it is not a violation of the ordinance.
I'm surprised, we, we didn't take a half a million dollar vehicle, we, he has to move in. You have to move a fifteen thousand dollar trailer?
We addressed, we addressed recreational vehicles, but not trailers, so we will-
Our, our bad.
Can you put boats in the franchise?
Sir?
No.
Put a boat somewhere trailer?
A boat is a recreational vehicle.
So that's the difference?
Yes, yes.
We'll kind of go back a little bit. We'll maybe, we'll bring, we'll bring forward an amendment.
But that, yes, we, we did look into it.
I'm surprised.
Mr. John?
You have a couple of items. Lee, could we possibly ask the post office one more time to consider changing the addresses from Kathleen to Perry? I realize what the answer will probably be, but just like my dating life, no matter how many times I get turned down, I just wanna keep asking. To ask them to do that, if you could. And then, one, one other item, I was contacted today by some residents out at Matt Arthur. They're very appreciative of their sidewalk and crosswalk. However, they do have a concern about increases in traffic out there, and so, could you refresh my memory, Lee, on what our policy is relative to crossing guards and so forth? Because like, you know, I see one every day when I go to work at Westfield, you know, I know we have them at other places, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what our policy is relative to their concern.
Two things have to be done, well, three things. First one is that you as council say, yes, that makes sense. Second thing is that the institution has to agree to pay fifty percent of the cost. And the third thing is that you all have to agree to pay the other fifty percent.
I guess I would, I'm then asking for us to perhaps consider that tonight, would be my request, or consider it for further discussion. It's a call that I seem to keep getting from out there, so.
And I would, I would absolutely support that. I mean, I know there's a crossing guard at Little Morningside School that's tucked in on a, on a side street with a much smaller school population, and Matt Arthur has way more children on a, two very extremely busy roads. I've stood out there in the afternoon swaying my signs when school was out. It is a madhouse out there. I can't believe they don't have a crossing guard.
Well, wouldn't that be the responsibility of the school?
Well, I would think it would be, but if you just said the-
We pay half of it, we pay a lot.
Well, what's happened with that is, is we get a zero response from the schools when we say it's their responsibility.
To pay half?
Well, they, yeah, well, go back to the original point, wouldn't that be the responsibility of the schools?
It would seem so.
City's original position was, it should be, but they historically have said, no. City's original position was, it should be, but they historically have said no. So for a while, the council may remember, we were paying a hundred percent of the cost on that. And what happened was, is we had one request after another request after another request, and so council said, you know, we can't keep going on like this and everything because it's not necessarily a huge amount of money, but it's less money than you have to go take care of something else and the fact about how it increases. So the determination was made, I think, final one was in there talking about Westfield schools.
Right.
That, well, okay, fine, you know, if there's going to be a crossing guard added, then that institution has to agree to pay fifty percent. And the city will pay the other fifty percent.
So that's what's currently happening at, at Westfield and at Morningside?
It's happening every single one of them, that's right.
Okay, but we pay half.
So what if we have four that have crossing guards?
Yeah.
Or just have four schools currently? It means you're gonna have to hire another person. Your payroll is gonna continue up and.
I'm telling you, that's dangerous up there.
Are you willing to go up on the list, right?
For one crossing guard out, like you.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, it's money. You're gonna take it, you'll find it in everybody.
We can build a long sidewalk, we can get a crossing guard.
What is the salary for a crossing guard?
Cheap.
It's in the ten or eleven dollar an hour range for one side of neighborhood. I don't recall exactly.
We've got two different classifications, the ones that are on, like at Perry Middle School in Westfield, where they're on a multi-lane, higher speed limit, they pay a little bit more.
The ones in neighborhoods pay a little bit less.
Less, three hours a day, how is it?
I believe we pay them four hours a day.
Four hundred and eighty days is the school?
Yes, sir, for the, only while schools and stuff.
Right.
Do you provide them a car or something?
Not for those, just the ones that we, and that's, that's purely for a safety issue. We, we took, for the ones on the multi-lane, high-speed roads, we equipped two cars so that they have lights and ability to notify the traffic that they're coming to a crossing. That wouldn't apply to the one we're talking about here.
It just continues to grow though, because we will have a request very soon from Mossy Oaks out there. I'm confident that that's coming, so they just, you know, every school wants to have one. And we, we've dealt with this issue for the last ten years, and so, used to we had, I don't know how many we had, but, so the council had made a decision.
Are we allowed to say anything? Okay, I just wanted to share, we were actually at Matt Arthur recently, just exploring, because we're always looking at, you know, opportunities and whatnot. And I don't know if you all are aware, but they're actually building Von Air Primary. So a significant amount of Matt Arthur students will be moving out to Matt Arthur Primary this year. So, I mean, I don't want to speak for the school system, but it sounds like we're gonna have a reduction in the amount of kids that are going to Matt Arthur.
Yeah, but they're moving everybody to the, they're taking a number of subdivisions out of that school and moving, as I understand it, moving it over to Von Air, and so.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to address the traffic volume that's on Winfield Way. Or most of those kids are walking from Hawks Nest and similar to other subdivisions there. I mean, as I understand it, that's what the issue is.
So what can we do to help Robert get it off his plate?
While I could pay the bill?
We will, well, I mean, assuming this is what you're interested in doing, if you think you're basically ready to go, we'll put it on the agenda tomorrow. You vote on it. If you say yes, that's what you want to do, then we proceed to.
We're not, we're not saying yes to, to paying a hundred percent of the salaries. It would have, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, if we say yes to paying half, and the board pays half, then Robert can say, well, we passed it, but the board wasn't willing to help us with the bill, so take it off him.
Right. I mean, that, that's, that's my assumption, but it is, but it is your position.
Right.
So if it's gonna be added, you have to give the okay, and whatever conditions you may have with it, but you need to do that.
I feel like it comes back to safety too, because it is, there are many, many children that walk, or many. I've seen them gather the children up at a fence down, just past the school property, and they wait till they all get there, and then they unlock the fence and a zillion little children run out. I mean, it's just, and over here, cars are in a big loop to cross the road and to try to get into the school, where there's still traffic going up and down like this, but they have to stop and wait and go over. And it's, it's horrible out there. And, but I think maybe a conversation with the principal first, maybe. What do you think?
So you're saying, so she can have a bad member come over there?
No, no, maybe not the principal, but. So she has no power to put anybody out there. That's true.
Mayor, one other thing, I just remembered that in talking with Forrest Walker with the school district, he did mention something to me that they are, they are looking at that situation and how they might be able to make some modifications on site for, for more stacking. So that may be something, that's something that they're looking at too. I don't know the details, but that, that's out there as well.
Thank you. So, or do you got, you, what would you like to do? Do you want it on the agenda for a vote?
For fifty percent?
Yeah, for fifty percent.
I don't have a problem with voting, but you can just keep the policy just as it is.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not saying change.
Yep, good. Let's get him on, put it on. Ms. Thomas, you have anything to say?
Yes, I got a question. Somebody called me and asked me, on this side, it seems like the name of the street is down there where Family, Family Dollar is. They stopped the sidewalk many, many years ago in certain neighborhoods, and they want to know if it's, eventually it's been on now that, that way. Okay, on, on this side, the Family Dollar is in the bottom, and there's a sidewalk on that side.
Right.
There's not, they stopped it in certain neighborhoods many, many years ago, and they want to know if we're gonna continue that policy or we're gonna finally put a sidewalk over it.
Which, which street is that? You're talking about on House and Lake Drive?
It's House and Lake Drive, but.
There's a sidewalk that goes down almost all the way to Miss Simmons, uh, new shop.
Well, it stopped before it got down.
Yeah.
It, it's.
Yeah, it just, it stops at Third, does it, I don't know, but it's Fourth or Third, so.
I'm saying as nice as I can. It's, it's stopped in certain neighborhoods, in a certain neighborhood before it got down there to that neighborhood. So it's, it's more people.
Making it, connect the existing sidewalk with up on Swift Street, House and Lake Drive up there, right?
You said Swift, this is the backside.
Yeah, but it would go to Swift, it would go by Oral Station, or somewhere.
They want to know whether they go on down past, at least down, at least down as far as the station.
House and Lake Drive.
We can take a look at.
I think it's called, I think it's called House and Lake.
It is, House and Lake Drive.
But, you remember many, many years ago, they stopped there.
So we want to get started back?
Yeah.
Okay, and finish it?
Okay, that's what they're asking.
That's right.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Gilmore, or where's Gilmore here? Ms. Newby first?
That's Mayor.
Ms. Newby?
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Council, I do have one item. Apologies for reading off the phone, I got this a little bit ago. On behalf of the Downtown Development Authority, please save the date for Thursday, March 12th. There will be an all-day, and of course, if you're interested, obviously, an all-day Downtown Development Authority training that day, conducted with the DDA and Miss Ann Arnold, who is a longtime-serving Downtown Development Specialist Guru, whatever you want to call her, in Rome, Georgia. One of the kind of foremost authorities on the subject. So it should be a very good training for y'all. I think it would count for your continuing education credits too that are, that are required. So if you're interested, please get Mark, uh, March 12th down, and we'll get more information out on that soon. But they did, it's a Thursday. Yes, sir. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Have nothing? Five to five is department head items. Mr. Worthington?
Nothing further.
Ms. Spitzner, anything? Boris to say anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Turpin?
Yes, thank you. Um, so Mayor Hassel, I'm technically supposed to be here tomorrow night to present this event. However, I'm gonna be out of town, so I wanted to come tonight before you have a packet for the Perry International Festival. Because this is a new event, I wanted to give you all as much details as possible. So the front is just kind of a general overview of kind of the mission of the event and what we plan to take place. And then I've also attached the lineup for the four different areas that we're gonna have entertainment, as well as the map. Now, all of this is subject to change, but we did nail up most of the details for this, so I hope that the changes in any will be minimal. And the event is gonna be on Saturday, March 21st, and it is gonna have the same footprint as our recent Food Truck Friday events. It will take place from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so a good chunk of the day. And we're hoping that we can hit people for a lunch hour and maybe an early dinner hour as well. This is gonna have entertainment on three different stages in three different areas of downtown. One of the stages will host musical acts, another one will host dancers, and then the other one will have a world bonus stage. So if you have any questions about what's gonna be on those, that is on the lineup sheet that I have for you. And we've got close to thirty different countries that are represented so far, and there's all these new interests that's being, you know, reached out. And I feel like this is gonna be a really great event. There's a lot of diversity in it, there's been a lot of really good feedback from the community, from different partners. We're getting, you know, exchange students involved, nonprofit groups, schools, the Westfield's involved. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities for non-professionals to get involved in this event. So it really has a diversity, not only culturally, but also in talent levels and opportunities for people who are maybe, you know, just trying to represent their country. So if you have any questions about this event, I'd love to answer them tonight, since I won't be here today. That way, if you have any questions about logistics for it, I can try to get those questions answered for you now.
Are you looking for sponsors?
Yes, there's, there's a general sponsorship packet for all of those 2020 special events that have been put out. I do have copies of it, Aster and Laffy as well, if you guys would like to review that. And so far, most of the sponsorships have been in terms of like in-kind. And so, for example, James Farmer will be putting some of his information on some of the marketing materials, because they're allowing us to use their parking lot. And but in terms of major sponsorships, nothing has come in so far.
Oh, these three stages speak.
So the diversity stage, which will showcase all of the different dancers, that is gonna take place on the, on the, I call it the courthouse lawn, but I know it's not a courthouse anymore. I just don't know what to call it. And that would be what I consider to be the main focal point. It's probably gonna have the biggest crowd. And it's definitely got the most diversity in terms of the stage lineup. There's, as you can see from the, the chart of all the different performers, that's got the most to entertain people. And we will also have a stage at the James Farmer Parking Lot down by the Swanson. That'll be our music stage, so I think that'll be really entertaining for people who are browsing the car show, browsing the different shops that are downtown, and then also if they're eating at the Swanson, and they decide to sit outside, and they've got live entertainment while they're eating. And then the world bonus stage will take place in the Bodega Ru parking lot. And I have already spoken with all of the different properties to make sure they're okay with this.
Any other questions? Thank you. Looks like a very exciting win.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Swan, anything else to say?
No, sir.
Ms. King? Chief Leonard?
No, sir, never mind.
Good. Ms. Clark?
Nothing further, sir.
Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Ms. McLeary, anything?
Nothing further.
Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, I do have a couple of items, Woods. First off, I want to, we have a developer who is looking at a piece of property, and there is potential property donation involved. I've talked to the manager and the city attorney, and at this point, we think it's a little premature to request that you consider a, let's take one, or you consider a reservation. However, the developer does have some property under contract. I have to look on, I forgot which color that is. So the property that's highlighted or outlined in green is under contract for potential residential development. The little triangular piece that is in red is a piece of property on a joint property that's, that property on earth is willing to donate to the city. It's a three acres in size. It would be donated as green space. However, there would be a requirement to get a sewer line through that property to connect to the, what I outlined in blue. And so, the, as I mentioned, the contract, the property in green is under contract, they're in their due diligence period. And just wanted to bring this to your attention and see if there would be, if there is concurrence that the city would accept, if offered and then offered, the, the property in red as open space with the ability to put a sewer connection there. And I wanted to point out as well, as far as connectivity to that property, the, what I've shown in blue is the proposed modification to the roads in the Phase Two of Stone Bridge, which will be going to the planning commission next Monday. And that one road has been designed with the right-of-way extending all the way to that property line. So there would be actual access to that triangle of this property.
Yeah, there will be more questions, but you have.
So where's, where's the sewer line coming from?
So there's a, there will be a sewer line extending through the, that road that will be built in, in Stonegate. So that blue road, blue line that represents road, there will be a sewer line extending through there to, to serve those properties. So the property in green will need access to sewer, and so they would be extending their sewer through that triangular piece to connect to the sewer in Stonegate, Stone Bridge.
So they want us to, they want to give us a piece of property, and then they basically want an easement to go through it to a pipeline?
Correct. Yeah, there would be a sewer line that runs through it, but otherwise, it would be open space.
Well, they expect us to put the sewer line in a little bit.
No, no, the developer of the property would be putting that in.
Okay.
They just need, they need the connectivity to get there, and the property owner that owns the property where the triangle is has apparently agreed to donate this, and like I said, it is a three-acre, roughly three-acre parcel. They provided a flat of what that would be, but at this point, we're not ready to present to you formal resolution. But the developer is in his due diligence period and wants to know whether council is willing to consider accepting that, that triangle at least or not, because that will then kill the deal.
Is the developer the same as from the Stonegate?
No.
And so, does the Stonegate developer, is he gonna develop down that road, the new portion of the road?
Yes, so there is, yes, we do have a revised preliminary flat, it'll go to the planning commission next Monday, for modifying the lots on, in the remainder of Stonegate, so that is moving forward, really is likely to be moving forward shortly.
So if we get same level of housing, the same?
I don't know.
Is Stonegate on our school's turn?
Yes, they are.
Where are the lines, you know?
I do know.
And I do have a comment too that they need to be aware of. Uh, this will go, these lines are being installed to go toward Stonebridge Livestation, which is right here. That Livestation pumps, Parkway Pump Station, and Parkway Pump. And Parkway Pump Station is one that we currently often monitor for capacity limitations. So I did make the engineer designing us aware that there would need to be a study on the capacity of Stone Bridge and Parkway to make sure that there was adequate space for the additional...
For this?
No, this is already on, this is already on. These new portions right here, the blue and the green, would go into Stone Bridge Pump Station. And Stone Bridge pumps to Parkway.
But it's near capacity.
No, Stone Bridge is not, I would say not near capacity. Parkway is. But when one pump station's pumping to another, the downstream pump station needs to be evaluated. So that was a comment in the discussion.
Comments, Mr. Gilmore?
As far as I can tell, conception, it seems to be fine as long as there's no conditions. I'd also like to check and make sure there wouldn't be anything prohibiting a street going through there. See how the green track goes up to King's Chapel? You know, on fire, a lot of times, wanna have, remember connecting through these different subdivisions and everything, so... As far as I can tell, if they're talking about doing a donation that has no restrictions and can be used by the public for anything, then I think that's fine, because they've already indicated where the access was going to be. If nothing else happens, it's either at the end of the blue.
Right. But...
But if they have any other, if they have any type of restrictions or anything, then I would suggest to you all to hold off or not do anything at all.
Well, I understood the condition was that we would take sewer there. That we would put a sewer line into that red triangle.
Well, they want to have access to put their, to put sewer, not for us to put sewer.
Well, no, it's a strange thing.
Yeah, okay, all right.
There's a sewer, the condition is that we allow them to put sewer line through there.
Correct.
It's not a condition for donation though, right?
Good. It's what owners do.
Well, the reason that it's, I mean, the, the developer of the property in green has talked to the property owner of the portion of the red to, and he's, and that property owner is willing to donate this. He understands that the developer of the green property had need, and the reason that it was all coming forward is to get access across the adjoining property to the blue. For the green gets the wood. And so, red is in the base. And, and it's for sewer connection.
No more condition. But my recommendation, if you have some reason...
And I think the reason that he's asking that it may go, that the property owner that's donating, I think the reason he's asking to donate it is because the property is in a conservation tax situation. And, and he's wanting to donate it as, as open space, so it doesn't impact... However, that works. So it doesn't impact this, this tax situation.
Like I said, council members, I think you need to make sure, you know, that either you're going to agree, there's not gonna be any other connection other than the sewer line between those two areas, which I don't think would make very much sense. Or that when this is donated, for generally the purpose of green space, but the city is free to use it for whatever it thinks would be appropriate. I doubt if you could build a house on there, for example. You see what I mean? I do see where there would be a need possibly to make a street connection.
A water line?
Coming through there. And I wouldn't want us to get into a situation where, see, and planning commission, where they're talking about making that, and then that's a prohibition on the property.
So is it, um... Would it be safe to, to tell the developer that the city is, would, would consider accepting it under those, those no conditions on how it's used?
No conditions. Then I, then I would say fine. I mean, we're always interested in getting green space, as long as there's not any problems for us.
Kill you in a ride.
But he, he might not want it if we won't let him put that line. He wouldn't want to give it if we wasn't gonna let him put the sewer line in.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the whole thing is to get an act, to get sewer access, right?
Well, and he's putting in it at his expense.
Correct.
But yeah, but I know, kind of beating the dead horse, I apologize for this. But we've had issues come up in the past about certain neighborhoods and developers not wanting to connect to others. That has caused, you know, traffic flow problems and some public safety issues and all that type of stuff. And I wanna make sure, recommending to you all that we're not caught in that. And that doesn't mean there's gonna be one. I mean, I have no idea. But just, you know, initially taking a look at it and what you have here, that could be something in the future that we may wanna do.
So you're saying, we won't accept it unless it comes with no conditions?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because you may want to put a walking trail through there, I mean... Well, I know kind of ironic now, but, but that's probably run into on these things. You know, if you, if you don't have that complete freedom for your type of stuff, then you can run into problems.
Were you anticipating that possibly the two neighborhoods, or one of the two neighborhoods wouldn't want to be connected to the other one? That there would be an issue with a street for that reason?
There could be.
Do you have an idea of how the new green development compares with Stone Bridge?
I do not. I do not. I haven't seen anything. Actually, I take that back. I've seen a proposed design from a different developer that included some additional property. But this is a completely different developer that's, that has the property under contract. So I don't know how, how he's planning to lay the property out, what type of house or price point or anything like that.
Is it a conservation type of thing?
It may be, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't, like I said, I haven't seen anything or heard anything. They've just approached me about whether or not the cities would be willing to accept that triangle as a donation.
Because, you know, we had one similar situation when we worked over there in the woods along, when we moved back up to the property there that we put the cul-de-sac into, where they requested a water line to be taken to that property, and it's, it was a real controversial thing. My concern is that they're taking the cul-de-sac all the way to that property line. So I assume that their thoughts are that they'll stub off the sewer at that point right there. And at some point in the future, come back and ask us to attach it to, for this new subdivision, I would only imagine.
Yes.
You gotta fix it.
But you know, it concerns me when somebody takes their cul-de-sac and puts it all the way and don't, and give it up for not building houses on it. That's just really...
Well, he really wasn't gonna get any houses there. I mean, he's, he's got, he's actually putting more houses in this section of Stone Gate than what was originally for it. That's why it's coming back to the planning commission. And the way it was designed, always designed, is that it was gonna have a cul-de-sac at the end, whether, and, and a house on each side, there was no house around it. So it's really no, whether it went to the property line or not, it was no, not gonna be any additional houses.
Just go on, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
As council, okay?
Well, only thing I would say, go ahead, but make sure, be very sure, that we got everything ready for me to do, because we don't wanna come up later saying, you say it.
At this point, I'm just telling him that, that the consensus is that we would look at it, consider it, with no conditions at all. And then if they agree to that and move forward, then at some point, there will be an actual resolution that will be prepared to bring to you for your official vote. Okay?
Thank you.
The, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other two items I wanted to bring to your attention are regarding the census. And as you know, it's 2020. Census will be getting started in, in all its glory real soon. We've been working through Complete County Committee with Houston County over the last several months, making sure that we're ready and have the messages that need to be prepared and when they're gonna be going out, and it's getting real close. Actually, next month, middle of next month, is when the mailers will be going out to everyone, inviting them to go and take the census. And it will be done through online. You can request it be done through, by phone or by mail. And then at some point, if you haven't responded, someone could come knocking on the door. But a couple of things, Ms. Gladys Grace came and asked me some questions about this the other day. And I wanted to let you know that the census, the US Census Bureau has prepared a 101-page document on how to count group quarters. The question was how, how are they counting jails and nursing homes and those types of facilities? And I presume that you didn't want that 101-page document. But I do have a one-page synopsis. Just letting you know, they, they obviously know what they're gonna be, how they're gonna be doing this, and I've got a document for you to look at on that. Also, as part of our, the Houston County Complete County Committee, we're working with a number of organizations, and Georgia Women is one of the organizations that has agreed to work with us to, and what they do is, they get together occasionally and, and write postcards and have a personal touch. And so, we've got, on February the 13th, and I guess if the 12th is Thursday, then the 13th must be Friday. Anyway, on the 13th, from 11:00 until 6:30 p.m., what you think, if you wanna pass around or have as many as want, at Ruby's over in Warner Robins?
It's a Thursday.
It's Thursday, okay, so yours is on...
I was talking about Larch.
Larch. It's a different month.
Sorry. So anyway, it's a, it's a, for a couple of hours, you're invited to come over, have some food and everything, and write out a, a, a postcard to someone, just asking them to return their census form. And so, we're, there's gonna be a bunch of people over, hopefully, just writing a little note on card, and that's what this event is, and then those will be mailed out. We're looking at sending those out to the areas that are specifically under counted, to give them a personal touch, a personal invitation to, to do this. So if you're interested or know someone that's interested, certainly you're welcome. I think we're looking at probably trying to do 400, 1,600 total cars, but 400 for Perry. And also, they've asked for $200 for postage, but anyway, we can take care of that. But again, like to offer you, do some good for the census, and like I said, you'll be hearing more about the census over the next few weeks. So also, just, I'll make a note, make a comment, jobs, they're still hiring people for the census. And if you know of anybody that's interested or whatever, they can go to 2020census.gov and find out more information there. Okay, that's all I have.
May I ask them a question?
Yes, sir.
When they gonna start working on Hill, Hillton Garden?
Well, I don't know. When they submit plans for us to start reviewing, then, you know...
I'm just, I'm just pleased as punch that we're getting one.
Well, we haven't seen anything for permitting yet, or talked to anybody about it, so...
Okay, the sign is, is up. That's all I know.
Here's your sign.
Is there anything else to come? At this time, I'll enter anything in motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.
So moved.